Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 24th, 2025 meeting of the City of Gloucester Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is a hybrid meeting where we're meeting in person here at the Rose Baker Senior Center, and it's also available on Zoom for the public that wants to participate remotely. For the record, the Zoom meeting ID is 882-9242-4377. I recognize in attendance myself, Joe Parisi, Michael Nyman, Peter Canavo, and Ron Wilson. I declare we have a quorum. Okay. First order of business is approval of the minutes of March 27, 2025.
I move approval of the minutes as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call. We can vote in person because we're all here. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meetings are approved. Decisions to run to the consent agenda. I know there were two added River Road. Yeah, the decision, on my agenda, it only had Thatcher. And what was the other one? There was a third one?
Beacon Street.
Beacon, okay. Yep, those, those two were fine. I'm going to pull the 84 Thatcher Road from the consent agenda because I don't feel the decision is comprehensive as it needs to be, and I'm going to pass it back to the attorney. So we're going to vote on River Road and Beacon Street tonight. Need a motion?
I can make a question before you make a motion. I noticed two things that I wasn't sure if they needed to be corrected on the, the one that involved the demolition. There wasn't the condition that I'm used to seeing, that the beacon, that it be expeditiously rebuilt. That was not in the decision.
I mean, the, the demolition and replacement. Yep.
It didn't have that condition that's usually in the decisions. If that's, I don't know if that's material.
2.3.
It's required by the ordinance, right?
Yeah, I think it's part of the ordinance and is required, yeah, by the, the code that was approved. I think we're okay there.
And then, and then the other one you brought up there is...
So that was 4 River Road, that first one you were talking about, right?
Okay. And then the other one, Beacon Street, there was in, in, in paragraph 17 of the findings of the board, there appeared to be a missing word. It didn't seem critical, but there was a little bump in the road. I sent an email this morning, but I guess...
Okay. I think we can approve those, and if we have, I have to, before I sign it, I'll double check.
I'd move approval of 4 River Road and 32 Beacon Street as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. So Thatcher Road is pulled. First order of business is the continued hearing of the petitioner Energy North, Inc., seeking a variance for lot frontage requirements at 40 Sargent Street. Harley, you're muted.
Thank you for bearing with me. When I came on as a panelist, it rejoined, so I missed you recognizing me. And I'm trying to turn on my video now, but I'll go ahead. Harley Racer with Rich May PC for Energy North Incorporated. We're requesting a continuance tonight so that we can get a more productive meeting with the board at your next meeting or in a month, on May 29th, if the board's amenable to that.
One of the problems we're having is that one of the board members that's eligible to vote is going to work as the mayor's assistant. Creates a lot of quorum problems, and what would be best for everyone, I think, would be to, for you to accept, to withdraw without prejudice and re-put the application back in, which will allow a whole new full board to be able to hear it on the, probably the 29th. But it could be amenable to that.
I, I don't have a problem with that. If, if we can withdraw without prejudice and resubmit for the May 29th meeting with a fresh package, that's, that's, we can do that.
Okay. So with that in mind, would you like a motion?
On the petition of Energy North Incorporated seeking a variance from frontage requirements pursuant to GZO 1.7, 3.2.3 at 40 Sargent Street, I propose withdrawal without prejudice.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to allow withdrawal without prejudice. Roll call. Yeah, I'd prefer.
Is it on? Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Okay, that's allowed to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Now we'll get into our new hearings. We have five tonight. First is the petitioner Tom Ariello seeking a special permit under 1.8, 1.10, and 2.3.4 subsection nine, and 4.1.2 for change of use at a restaurant to allow outdoor seating and reduced off-street parking at 272 Main Street.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I'm Tom Ariello. I own the Salticott Art House.
Can you give us your address?
I'm sorry.
Just remind everybody, if you come up, name an address first so we can record it and then go to it.
Sure, Tom Ariello, I'm at 189 Atlantic Road. Sure. So I own the Salticott Art House on Rocky Neck and the soon-to-be-open Salute Day at 272 Main Street. My hope is that I'll be able to open by the end of June. I've had a lot of issues with the building, so it's been a, it's been a fun year trying to get, trying to get this thing off the ground, but I think we're finally, finally set. The variance that I'm seeking right now will allow me to use the parking lot for outdoor seating. The overall concept here is really to allow patrons to sit in the parking lot, and much like in Europe, I lived in Europe for a couple of years where you could sit and have your dogs with you while you're having brunch or, or dinner. I would also, with this, I'll be working with Cape Van Animal Aid where the proceeds would be going to them. I sit on the board for Cape Van Animal Aid. They'll have rescue dogs there at times as well. So the, the hope here is really to do what we can for Cape Van Animal and to, to help bolster this end of Main Street where I'm trying to, to get some traffic down here. I'm sure you've, you're familiar with the building. It's a unique setup with it. It's not going to be invasive to neighbors at all. We're set down, completely boxed in. The issue that I'm having is, well, it's not an issue. What I'm, what I'm asking for is the ability to have off-street parking or, you know, use my off-street parking when I do set this up. It would be not at all times. It would just be when it's nice out. I'll have tables that will go up, I'll have chairs that will go up. I, I'm hitting the requirements that I need to in regards to cleaning and waste disposal, also doing what I need to do to make sure that the dogs, I'm following the codes that the dogs have adequate water, et cetera. My overall goal here again is to really bring life to this end of Main Street, just like I did on Rocky Neck with, with trying to get folks down there. We've been successful. I think we've proven to be pretty responsible when it comes to having a license and what it means to the importance of having the liquor license. I don't have full liquor. I don't have an interest in having full liquor, so I've had, in two years, I've had no issues. It's really a wine bar. It's beer wine, and I do have some cordials there so people could get like an aperol spritz. So it's again, bringing that kind of European vibe. When I first had the thought of this concept, I went to the head of the Licensing Authority and got verbal saying, this is great, I'm in support, move forward with this. I went to the Department of Health, spoke to Dominique. She again said, you know, she said, this is great, pulled Robin and said, let's, let's see if we can make this happen. So that's, that's about how far I am in this process right now. I do realize that, you know, with approval, then I would have to go back to the Licensing Authority. I've already got the paperwork set because I have to change my premise in where I'd be serving, and I'd be making altercations to the parking lot. I think I underestimated on the presentation that I gave you, but I do not add the blacktop and stuff like that. But it's probably about a $25,000 investment for me to get it set to where I would be comfortable having, having people out there. My hope is that I get approved and I'm able to ride it for, you know, to get it in for this summer would be, would be ideal for me. And again, the overall goal is really just to bring life to this end of Main Street. There's adequate parking on the street. Parking is never even used on weekends. It's not used at night, nights at all, and my hours are pretty much, I open at four o'clock unless there's a private event, but I'll be open at four o'clock, so it's, there's really not even business traffic that would be using, using lots. Yes, then, well, I've taken some time, get some feedback, and again, I do have the advantage of being at the Salticott, and I was asking people if I did something like this, if they would even come as customers. It's important to me, and was able to get about 90, 85 or 90 signatures in support of this. And then I met last week, I reached out to the upbutters that I have in the building next door, and had, there were about eight people that came in. I wanted to answer any questions they might have. I showed them around the building, didn't have anyone sign anything. It wasn't about that, but I just wanted to gauge from them, is this going to be an issue? And overwhelming support to the point where they're texting me after saying, worksite, I can't wait for you to open.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me. Are you intending to use the entire space where the parking is?
I think it's safest to use the entire space because if not, the lot is large enough and it, it does fit for 10. If I did it just where five would be, I'd be concerned with cars pulling in and out with how the tables are going to be set up. I'm not comfortable doing that. But if that became a requirement, I would figure it out. But my, my hope is to be able to, when I do this, just utilize the 10 spaces for this.
And how will you close off the parking lot?
Right now, there is, it's purple. Right now, there is...
The purple chain, I believe.
Yeah, there's, there's two purple things there. I'm working, I'm having new fencing put up on the rocks right now that should be going in next week to protect a barrier there, new wood fences that are going up on the top that will not be seen from the street, stuff that will protect where my trash bins are, and then I'm changing to make it smaller that I could actually close it off, that cars can't come in and out. That, I'm not going to do that expensive if I'm not approved. So if, if I'm not approved, I'll just leave it the way it is, and I won't blacktop to save the money. But if approved, I'll be working, I've already got the quote, somebody would take to, to change the fence.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we see if there's any public input? Have a seat. We're going to call for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application. Again, we're on Zoom, so people at home can raise, press the raise hand button, and we'll bring them in also. And when you have your turn, we need your name and address first. So in favor? Anyone in favor wishing to speak? No? Scott, are you, are you on? You're muted. Need to unmute.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Scott Adam Chernoff, 39, Woodward Ave, Gloucester, Mass. I also have a business at 322 Main Street. It sounds like a great idea, what he's trying to do, and I think it'd be a benefit to the city. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Okay, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward, speak directly into the mic, and give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Dennis Feeney, I live at 15... My name is Dennis Feeney, I live at 15 Prospect Square in a butter. So basically, my house looks right down in that parking lot from both levels, and I'm totally against it because that would be just too much noise for my property. I think it'd be a big problem in the summertime with all the seagulls. They nest on my roof, they nest on all the roofs around me. And I'm just against it. I think it'd be too much noise.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, I'm Maria Galante, I live at 274 Main, or five?
74? Yep, great.
So we're right next door, and the parking lot needs to remain a parking lot. 10 residents that have cars that live at 274, or there are over 12 employees that have cars in the four businesses that are also neighbors. In addition, there's an Airbnb next door with only one parking spot for two units, and then another one or two cars for them. And then there's seven houses on Main Street to Flanagan's. Some are two families that probably have two cars per home, so maybe 16 cars, for a grand total of 40 needed parking spaces. If you remove your parking lot and employ 12 people that have cars and 50 out of the 80 people capacity visit your business, there will be absolutely not enough parking. There isn't enough parking now. And please, with all due respect, don't tell us to park on the side streets. The people who do business aren't told to park on the side streets, and I think you'd agree that residents are just as important as the people who visit businesses. Your parking lot needs to remain as a parking lot, and I'd go even further by saying you should put an upper deck above your parking lot to accommodate your outdoor seating and help with residents who will be forced out of parking.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? You're online, you have to hit your raise hand button on your device. No one? Okay, we'll close public testimony. We'll have discussion by the board or other questions. Pardon me? Oh, you have an opportunity for rebuttal if you wish. You can rebut anything that was said in opposition if you choose.
No, just to, you know, I appreciate the, appreciate the input and understand. I guess when it comes, when it comes to noise, I don't, I don't think the noise is going to be an issue. And with the, with the way it's set up, I just, it's not going to be an issue. There's not going to be live music or anything out there. It's a dining place. If I did anything, it would be light ambient music. But even, even that, it would just not be invasive. I do understand the parking issues. Again, my business is at night. It's, it's free parking for most of it, and even on Sundays, it's free parking all over the place. So I don't think it's realistic. If I wanted to do this to build a deck, I mean, I couldn't do that. It would just be cost prohibitive. It'd be crazy for me to build a deck, and if I did that, it would be harder for the other gentleman that brought up concerns because it would, it would raise it up even higher. I'm low enough in a pit that I don't think I'll be invasive to the people on Prospect, but appreciate the input.
Thank you. So my concern is you were before us this previous year when you bought the place and asked to be allowed to expand it, which you're doing right now. And in those discussions at that meeting, none of us seemed to be too concerned about the expansion, and it was even mentioned in the minutes that, oh, there's plenty of parking, so no reason you can't make the restaurant bigger. But now, for the first time I can remember, somebody's asking us to allow them to get rid of all their parking.
This is a first. This is a first. I've been on this board 18 years.
I've heard, I've heard reduce parking, one or two spots to accommodate. To remove all the parking in a downtown area is a difficult choice. And, you know, I always wait for testimony and public feedback and, you know, hearing what they had to say, I think, carries a lot of weight.
Yeah, and in fairness to the discussion, I mean, I looked at the addresses. I didn't read all 96 letters. I bet I read half of them. I scanned them really quick and I looked for addresses. So I think people are in favor. I would guess patrons are in favor, or people, maybe for the animal shelter and so on. But I didn't see any addresses close. Maybe I missed a few, but I didn't see any addresses of people close to the, to the location itself, unlike the lady who came up and spoke who lives right there and wells, and this gentleman, I'm sorry, yes, both of you, who live right close by. So anyway, that was my thought even while I was reading the letters, that these are people in support of this idea. They're not going to be, and the impact on them would be positive because they would be patrons. I personally think it's a great idea, by the way, so I'm not... But I, but I am opposed to giving away...
I mean, I think for me, personally speaking for myself, if I'm trying to go to any event restaurant, there's no parking available, I'm going to go to the next place. So I wonder if you're doing more bad than good for your own business from not telling you how to run your business. I think it's a great restaurant and the menu and everything, and I wish nothing but the best. But I know as, as an individual, if I'm going downtown and I can't find any parking spot, I don't care if it's outdoor seating or not, I'm just going to go to the next place that's closer, that has parking available. I'm not going to walk half a mile. But that's, again, I sit with Michael.
Okay, any, on, anybody? I'm in the same, same place as you are. I can't see eliminating all the parking.
I think there's precedent.
We typically, in a case where obviously you don't have the support, sometimes allow people to withdraw their application rather than turn you down. If we turn you down, you couldn't come back with anything different for two years. So if we might allow withdrawal, then maybe you can compromise and come up with something that might be more acceptable. But with that in mind, in fairness, we'll entertain a motion to allow withdrawal without prejudice.
And the petitioner of Tom Ariello is seeking special permit pursuant to GZO 1.8, 1.10, 2.3.49, and 4.1.2 for change of use as a restaurant to allow outdoor seating and reduce off-street parking at 272 Main Street. I move in withdrawal without prejudice.
Second.
You're made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's allowed to be withdrawn. Thank you. Our next hearing is the petition of Scott Brown seeking a special permit under 1.9 to alter and expand a non-conforming structure and a variance pursuant to 3.2.1 for front yard setback in order to construct an addition at 46 Atlantic Street.
As Scott's making his way up, help me, I don't feel like he needs variance. He's already, so I was reading the table. He's, he's already in his setback, and he's increasing four feet further into his setback. So I don't see why he needs a variance. And if I'm wrong, you know, we can discuss that, but I don't think he needs a variance. Hold on just one second. Ah, okay.
Okay, why don't you, why don't you start? Tell us about your project.
Scott Brown, 46 Atlantic Street. What I have is a setback problem on the opposite side of the house where the addition is supposed to be put on. It's existing from when the house was built. It's like two and a half feet or so into the setback. The property that it's, where it's involved, the owner of that property is unknown by the city, so I don't see that being an issue.
Okay, so tell us about your addition. I mean, what do you consider your front street? You drive in that driveway?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, so your front, very interesting. Envelope, pretty good. You got that little bit of an overhang. I agree, I don't think...
I don't think he needs variance.
No, I don't either.
Yeah, I think he's, I think he's already in his front setback.
So what you do...
And he's extending the existing non-conformity addition four feet.
Side of this very interesting shaped polygon.
It's very interesting, yes. How did you come by that?
So when, when I looked at this drawing, the, the dash lines are the existing structure and the solid is the new structure?
That's where you're building the addition, what I guess I would call onto the back.
Okay, so now, yeah.
It's the lighter colored section of the drawing is the addition.
Yeah. So what you do need is, you do need permission to alter and expand what is a non-conforming structure.
Yes.
And the threshold, all you have to give us for that is that it's not going to be more, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So you make that case.
It'll fit right into the neighborhood. The height of the ceiling will become eight feet to fit the code of the ceiling heights. Height of the structure will still stay quite below the, the level that it needs to be
And you're, you're not tearing down anything, right? You're just adding on?
Just adding on.
Anybody other questions?
I'm good for now.
All right, let's take testimony. We're going to, you can, you can sit back down. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward, and if you're on Zoom, you can hit the raise hand button to be recognized. Anyone in favor? Anyone opposed to the application to speak? Any opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion.
I can do a motion.
Go ahead.
Petition of Scott Brown seeking a special permit pursuant to 1.9 to alter and expand non-conforming structure, and you do not need a variance, so I'm not going to include that, at 46 Atlantic Street. He is increasing an existing non-conformity. He's extending into the existing setback where he's already in the setback. So it is more non-conforming, but it's clearly not substantially, more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, so I would move approval of a special permit.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote. I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're approved. We'll get a decision out to you. I'll write it. Wait till you get all the instructions. Okay. Our next hearing is the petition of Peter and Aaron Cherry seeking a variance under 3.2.1 for rear yard setback to construct an addition at 497 Washington Street. How are you?
Good evening, thank you. My name is Peter Cherry. This is my wife, Erin. We live at 497 Washington Street, which is the property that we have made application about. This is our primary and only residence. We live there with our three children, 15, 10, and 8, and we need a little bit more space. Can't expand to the north. If you look at the zoning site plan, you see that our, our house is situated in the northeast section of our lot. We can't expand to the north because we are right up against our side yard setback with our neighbor. We can't expand to the west because there are topographical features that prevent it. There's a granite outcropping of ledge on the front side of the house there, and then there's also a very steep slope, so it would be very costly, cost prohibitive to be able to expand in that direction. So we would like to expand to the south and east. To the south is... To the south, there's no hindrance at all. But to the east, we're requesting six feet of relief on our rear setback. Being R10, we are required to have a 20-foot setback. And we propose to expand 10 feet in the addition in that direction, which would leave us with 14 feet of setback, setback instead. Now, behind the property, our, our close abut there is the Beaman Memorial School, city-owned property. There is a woodland hillside, a kind of a buffer area between our property and the school's rear access road, which leads to the bus circle and there's a dumpster up there. So that is land that is not likely to be developed anytime in the near future, or in really ever. So I, I submit that it really is keeping with the spirit of the setback requirement because there will be a significant piece of land that, that remains undeveloped in the rear of the property. And I respectfully submit that, that the financial hardship and, and other hardship that, we really do like the granite outcropping in front of our house and don't want to build over it, that, that meets the requirements for this, for the zoning variance.
Right. And you're also, that city-owned land is much higher.
It is.
So it is very minimal affecting anyone.
Correct, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions or take testimony? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward. Anyone in favor? Raise your hand if you're on Zoom. None? Anyone in opposition? Or any opposition to the application? No opposition, no rebuttal, I close the public hearing. Ready for a motion or any discussion needed?
This, this looks like a good project, taking into consideration the, the land. It's going to be down way below the road from the Beaman. I think this deserves to be approved. And no one has anything else to say, I will make a motion. Go to it. For the motion of the petitioners Peter and Aaron Cherry, who are seeking a variance pursuant to GZO 1.7 and 3.2.1 for rear yard setbacks to construct an addition at 497 Washington Street, I move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to offer variance. Roll call, I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motions carried. We will draft together a decision and get it out to you as soon as possible.
Are you going to put a staircase right up so the kids can go right up to the Beaman School?
Be easier to vote, yeah. Okay, next up is the petition of Raymond Young, seeking a special permit under 5.24.6 to construct a detached ADU, requiring dimensional relief at 162 Weston Avenue.
Looks like my computer just died on me here, so I think I'm going to have to wing this one a little bit. So for, for the record, Aiden Church, Seaside Legal Solutions, address 123 Main Street here in Gloucester. So this is 162 Weston Ave., correct?
Yep.
So here tonight on behalf of petitioner Raymond Young, seeking a special permit for an ADU under Section 5.24. So obviously I can't go through my normal slide deck, but as you'll see, the existing, the existing property is conforming. It's, it's a large lot and Ray is seeking to put the ADU in the front yard. So the accessory dwelling unit will, it will meet the general standards for accessory dwelling units. It'll have the, the regular, it will have the, the regular amenities that are necessary for ADUs, including separate kitchen, dining and living areas and a bathroom. As you know, some of the, the GZO requirements have recently been superseded by statute. That doesn't really apply in this case. The owner's going to continue to occupy and he'll abide by any short-term rentals. The only issue that we have is that, that it won't comply with accessory building setbacks. It'll be located within the front yard setback area and it will be located closer to the street than the existing structure. And it will also exceed the maximum height because an ADU is required to be 20 feet tall if it does, if it, it can be 20 feet, 24 when it complies with all setback areas and 20 feet where it doesn't. We don't. But we are also over the 20 feet. So the standard for a special permit for an ADU, as you know, is that it will not, it'll meet, it will, you know, provide for all the interests in the, the ADU section of the ordinance and it will not be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. In this case, we will meet all of the requirements under, under the ordinance. It'll meet, meet the, meet the standards. It'll provide an extra unit of housing in the R20 district. It's an affordable unit should he choose to rent it out. Or, you know, it can be a, a, a unit for, for his family use. And it won't be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. Even though it's located in the front yard, there's a tall wall, which should be, there should be a picture of that included in the packet, which will shield the ADU from view from the street. And then, like I said, it's, it's a large lot. The neighbor to the left, the house is well set back on the lot. And then the neighbor to the right actually also has an accessory building right in the front yard as well. So those will essentially line up. So for those reasons, I believe that, you know, the ADU will meet the special permit standard under Section 5.24.
So, yeah, I mean, obviously we'd have to grant relief for height and front yard and an ADU closer to the street than the principal dwelling. I get all that, but I couldn't for the life of me, with this plot plan, tell you where this is. I've been out on the site. I, there's nothing that shows the curb cut or the walls.
Or the driveway.
The driveway. I don't have any idea where this building's going. And I was out there, and if I had to build this for you, I wouldn't know where to dig the foundation based on what you gave me.
Yeah, so, you know, so I understand that the, under, under the ordinance, the building inspector is allowed to accept an application, as you know, accept a plan that doesn't strictly meet all, all of the requirements for a site plan under the ordinance. Obviously, the, the curb cut, as you can see from the aerial photos that are, that are included in there, while it's, while it's not a great representation as opposed to having it directly on the site plan, it is, you know, to the, a little bit to the left on, on the lot. And then as you enter into the lot, where the wall is, it'll be right, you know, behind the wall, on the, in the right front corner of the lot from the street.
Going to be on the other side of the stone wall?
Well, yeah, it'll be, it'll be behind the stone wall from the street, yes.
The front stone wall.
Yeah.
Where is it in relation to the two-side stone wall?
Because the driveway is pretty much bounded by stone walls, so, you know, I was out there peeking over walls and it looked like I was looking into somebody else's yard.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, I don't want to be too strenuous, but I think you'd need another drawing before I'd be willing to vote for this.
And/or we would accept having it staked out. Go back and see where this is.
The corners of the, of the buildings staked out.
Okay, we could do that.
And if it's behind those stone walls, you're going to have to explain to us how we can get to them. Because I didn't see an opening in the wall on that left side.
I don't know that it is, I'm just, but my thing is, you can say, oh, we don't have to submit a decent plot plan by ordinance. I'll be damned if I won't vote no if I don't know where the building's going.
Understood.
So I'm going to ask, I don't even want to take testimony tonight. I'd rather us make a motion that we continue this and that give them time to mark it out, stake it out, something, so we can go in there, pull in the driveway and know where this thing's going.
Yeah, so knowing that I'm going to be away from, for two meetings in May, you only have four people here, we're a little bit short, would you be interested in a continuation to the first meeting in June? Okay. But if we, if we do it to the middle of May.
We won't, we won't have enough.
We won't have four people, won't have quorum.
Yep. So the only time, and next week, we already have seven hearings, so the fifth, May 8th. So it was going to the 29th at least anyway, so June 12th. We will hear it and take care of it, but in the meantime, I can let us know once it's been staked out and the members can at their leisure. Sorry, see where this is going. So that would be, I would entertain that motion to continue and to require staking out before.
So in, in the matter of the petitioner Raymond Young, speaking a special permit per GZO 5.24.6 to construct a detached ADU at 162 Weston Ave., I propose that we continue this to the first meeting in June, June 12th.
Second. Motion's made to continue this to June 12th with the request to have the ADU staked out and to notify the board secretary when that's been done, so that the members can know and go out and take a look at it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's what we're going to go for. Okay, our next hearing is the petition of Raymond Young, seeking a special permit under 1.8, 1.10, 2.3.1 subsection 4, and 4.1.2 with variances pursuant to 3.2.1 for front, side yard setback lot area lot coverage in order to convert an office building into a two-family home with reduced off-street parking at 320 Main Street.
Again, for the record, Aiden Church, Seaside Legal Solutions, 123 Main Street, Gloucester. I have the application on my phone this time, so I'm winging it less than the last one. No, it's, it's okay. I don't have it available to, to email, so. So again, here tonight on behalf of Ray Young, owner of 320 Main Street. This lot is located in the Neighborhood Business District. It's currently a two-level office building. It's a non-conforming lot and it's also a non-conforming structure in the Neighborhood Business District. It pulls for both commercial structures and residential structures, it'll pull the adjacent R5 dimensional controls. So in this case, we're proposing to change use from an office building to a two-family use, which will wipe away the pre-existing non-conforming structures and requires the change of use special permit under 2.3.1. And it will also require variances under Section 1.7. And we also will need a special permit for parking under Section 4.2. So to start with the change of use special permit, as you know, the standard under Section 1.8.3 is that the proposed use must be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the GZO based on the seven factor test. And to go through those seven factors, in this case, the proposed two-family is in harmony with the intent of the GZO. It will not affect, it will not negatively affect the surrounding neighborhood. The residential use is actually probably less intensive than most of the other allowable commercial uses in the district. So the traffic and safety will actually probably be improved relative to what, what could be in the same spot. The utilities and public services are sufficient to serve a two-family use as the, the surrounding neighborhood has multiple two-family and multifamily and heavy commercial uses as It also, the proposed use aligns with the neighborhood character and social structure of the Neighborhood Business District, where residential uses are allowed. And the environment will not be negatively impacted because the lot's already pre-developed. The footprint of the structure itself is not being expanded through this, through this conversion. And the city and the applicant will both see a positive fiscal impact. The applicant will, the increased rental income from being able to rent it out as a two-family, and the city will receive new growth tax revenue from the increased assessment, the increased tax assessment associated with fixing up the structure, the current structure. The inside is, is in relatively bad shape currently, so it'll be fixed up for the residential use. And to finally, the seventh factor, the locus is not in the FEMA flood plain, so that does not come into play in this case. So as previously mentioned, the existing structure currently encroaches into the required front, left and right yard setback areas. The lot is also undersized and the structure exceeds the maximum 35% lot coverage. None of that's changing. The only thing that changes is that when you change the use, it now has to abide by the, the R5 dimensional controls under Section 3.2.1 rather than the, the commercial controls. So I am fairly sure that those are all the same, but regardless, the, all of the non-conformities will still be the same. So as you know, the, the standard for a variance is that a literal enforcement of the GZO would involve a substantial hardship to the applicant, which is related to the shape, topography of the land or structures in question, and the desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. The exterior of the structure is not being altered at all in this case. The variances will simply allow the structure to remain as-is, where-is, in the location that the structure has existed since it was constructed around 1930. A strict enforcement of the GZO would actually require that the structure be demolished and then, of course, you could not rebuild because the lot is undersized. And this hardship is related to the existing location of the structure and the size of the structure on the undersized lot. But granting the variances won't harm the public good. It'll merely allow the structure to remain as-is, where-is, as I previously stated. And lastly, this relief will also require a special permit for parking. You need 1.5 spaces per dwelling unit in the Neighborhood Business District. So we need three spaces for the two-family use. There are no off-street spaces. There is a garage in the structure that is existing currently, but it wouldn't, it doesn't actually get a dimensionally conforming parking space, so even if there is one space there, we're requesting the, the full three spaces of relief anyways. And to grant that special permit, the board needs to find that a lesser number of spaces will serve the, the intent of the GZO. In this case, there are two spaces right in front of the, right in front of the house and then there are more up and down Main Street in that area and on Rogers Street. So in, in the off-peak hours, when the residents are coming and going, there seems to generally be parking in that area, so that the, the residents and the, the neighborhood that surrounds them shouldn't be negatively affected by not having any off-street parking on-site. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Take some testimony, is anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Come forward or raise your hand on Zoom. One in favor? Is there any opposition to the application? Next door, yeah. He's the abutter. Yep, bring him in.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, again, my name is Scott Adam Chernoff, 3, 39 Woodward Ave. I am also an abutter. I own the building 322 Main Street, right next I am also an abbot, I own the building 322 Main Street, right next door. I am actually neither for or against. I just want to elaborate that the parking, no matter what is there, is always difficult. Peak hours, off-hours, any hours, there's just congestion of parking no matter what. So no matter what's there, there's always a parking issue. Especially with Seaport Grill, a lot of patrons will park all over that area, and the employees mainly park on the street too. So during any hours, parking is, always seems to be difficult. But no matter what is there, parking will be an issue. I, I don't know what will be the least impactful, but I'm neither for nor against, just wanted to say that parking, there is definitely issues. But that's it, I mean, I, whatever you guys decide, I am for, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in either for or against? Anyone else? Beverly, you can come in, we're gonna pull you in. You're muted, can you unmute?
Oh, here we go, okay. Here we now?
Yep, go to it.
Okay, 8 Commonwealth Avenue. I agree with Mr. Chernoff, we, we need more housing, but housing without parking, uh, it just seems problematic to me. Most lawyers tell us there's, there's not a problem with parking, but there, there seems always to be a problem with parking. I live across from a grandfathered-in five-unit building on Commonwealth Avenue that has no parking, and it's an issue when people don't have parking. So it's, it's, you know, there's a plus that more housing's gonna be added, but there's a definite negative that we're gonna be adding housing with no parking at all. So I guess that puts me more in the negative than in the positive, or, or balances out, I don't know. But I hate to see new housing added without parking because downtown, no matter what some people may think or say, definitely has a parking issue. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Saying none, we'll close public hearing, rebuttal.
Um, yeah, so we, we recognize the, the, the difficult situation here. There's no room on the lot to create additional parking without, you know, tearing down portions of the structure, which will limit, limit the use to begin with. So we're in a situation right now where if we keep it as a commercial structure, or commercial use, sorry, this doesn't come into play whatsoever. So you can by right turn this into the most intensive commercial use that you can think of, something, say, requiring appointments every 15 minutes and people coming and going. And they can do that by right. So keeping it how it is won't create additional parking. Changing it won't create additional parking necessarily, but we will be adding housing units, which are needed as well. So the parking sort of is what it is, and I would, I would argue that we meet the intent of the GZO in that respect.
Okay. So I think, I think the question for us about parking, oh, I'm sorry, you're done?
Yep.
So I think the question for us about parking is, if we like the use, we haven't decided that we do yet, but if we like the use, is the parking gonna be worse, you know, with designated three residential, possibly four, you know, people parking there versus a commercial use? Or is it neutral, sort of, that there isn't parking, there's not gonna be parking, and it's Gloucester?
I, you know, I agree. You know, looking at this property, I drove by, I mean, we drive by it every day, and I noticed there's, you know, parking out front, and my question to you with that parking garage is right now, I know you're not gonna use it as a parking garage. Is that still gonna stay as-is, which kind of gives you an access to that parking right there? Where, you know, a non-resident of that building couldn't park there, correct?
So my understanding is the plan shows the garage bay staying, so I would imagine that the curb cut will also stay as well. So, I mean, in, in theory, a resident could park there, but they'd be blocking the curb cut, which may or may not, you know, be a parking violation anyways, so.
I, I, I mean, right out of the gate, I don't really have an issue with this at all. I'm always against, you know, reducing parking or no parking, but, you know, this building is a unique situation, you're not in a crowded neighborhood. It's a wide, wide street, so it's not like people are constantly parking there, and, I mean, for me, I, I don't have an issue with it. Is, do you know the history of that building at all, if it was of a resident? Go ahead.
I'll, I'll do the history lesson, if you want.
You're not that old, Joe.
So that building, I've been around. That was Gleason's Refrigerated Trucking Company for years and years and years, and 50 years. And Ken Gleason, that office on the bottom level was incredibly busy. He hauled every piece of frozen goods out of the Quincy Market freezers. All the tractor-trailers had to go in and out of there all the time. The salesman, the, into the office, was a very busy office. And upstairs was a place where people could live, and...
So mixed-use, mixed-use building?
Mixed-use was really there back in the day, and a lot of times, people could sleep there, like over, over-road truck drivers that couldn't get into the crow's nest, they would stay at Kenny's place. So it does have a history of that.
Thank you.
Certainly, I can think of a million commercial uses that would be much more obnoxious than two of five.
I agree.
Think we're good there.
Not extremely, I'm not very comfortable with the idea of parade of horribles versus no parking spaces. I'd be much more comfortable if there was one space, and they're leaving the space there.
Well, there is a space.
There is one in front of that garage, but you gotta under-
Garage that you can-
There is the garage.
Right.
But, you know, that you would pull a car into if you wanted.
So whether, to me, it's a commercial building or residential, it's operated as-is forever, and it hasn't been an issue. If this was, you know, further down, like that restaurant where it had ample parking, and now you're gonna completely eliminate it in a tight, tight resident, then I could see the argument there, I think we'd all be agreeing on that. But considering the location and the mixed-use and the history of it, adding two residential properties to that, I don't think would be more detrimental to the neighborhood. I mean, it's mixed-use all the way around. I saw plenty of parking spaces wide open during the day after work. So I don't think a resident is impeding on the other businesses and the other residents nearby because I believe that's the last one before you have to go all the way around the block before you hit any other, uh, any residential buildings. So for me, those reasons and the unique location, I don't have an issue with it. I think housing is required, again, I'm not one for reducing parking, but this situation makes sense for the use and how they're gonna apply it. I think it makes better use for residential. So for those reasons, I would strongly support it.
One thing I would say too is, so next door, Dr. Chernoff, he spoke and didn't really have an objection. And his business is there, and he has a couple of parking spaces, and this is a mixed-use residential above, doctor's office below. And then you have this property, which there's two spaces in front of it, then there's the driveway, curb cut. Then there's another space, and then after that, all the way to the corner, the Schuler House is way up on the hill, they don't go in that way, no one could ever climb those stairs. They go in up on Prospect Street, and they have a big parking lot in the back. So they're never gonna be parking out there. So I think realistically, this, I think two residential units would be the least objectionable use that could go in there.
Yeah, I think-
Go ahead, Michael, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I think that would be my argument in that the building exists, and two residential units is not, I personally don't believe is gonna impact the parking any more than a commercial use, and potentially less. So that's how I look at it, it's not like he's asking to put a new building there, it's there.
I am persuaded.
I think there's a tremendous hardship if he was trying to create parking.
Yes.
You'd have to, like, take part of the building down, and it would be definitely a hardship.
Anyway, that's what satisfies me, I just don't-
I'm persuaded.
Okay, I'll stop.
All right, so if no one else has any more to add, we'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I can make a motion. Petition, Raymond Young seeking special permit pursuant to 1.8, 1.10, 2.3.1, 4, and 4.1.2, with variances 1.7 for front and side yard setbacks, lot area, lot coverage in order to convert an office building into a two-family home with reduced off-street parking. I think per the discussion that we've already had, I think it's a good project. I think the sticking point was parking, I think we've talked our way through that, that it's not gonna negatively impact. So I would move approval of the special permit and the variances as discussed.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fast, appreciate the draft.
Right, it's a good decision, yep.
We'll do, apology for the clunky presentation.
He did good, he did good.
So, folks, May 8? May 8, we have seven hearings. We don't have a quorum, I don't believe. I'm here, I'm here, Michael's here, Ron's away, Catherine's no longer a member. James is not back, right, is he gonna be back by May 9? We're gonna have to get him back for that, he's gotta get sworn in and then he can vote. But if we don't have James for the 9th, we won't be able to hold a meeting. That backs us up big time.
Remote, remote sign-in, or? No, I can't, unless, you know, the Lufthansa has-
You're in Thailand, or?
No, I'm gonna be over the Atlantic. Unless Lufthansa has some really good-
Good wifi.
Wi-Fi, right. It's a dirty job being retired.
I know, it's tough. So anyway, they, they're trying to make a change in the ordinance and the procedures that would allow Axel come back on because of the residency requirement. And we do have another person that the mayor is considering to possibly come on. Decides to go that way, and I'll have a conversation with him in a day or two about, he can give that person a temporary appointment. So I, I think we're gonna be okay one way or the other, May 8th. But I just wanted to make sure everybody knew what we were going against. With that in mind, everybody, nobody has anything else? We were supposed to discuss, but-
The thing from the planning board.
To us. And I did, I did meet with the planning director just to get some feedback, and kind of agreed with what I thought is, there's a bunch lacking in that thing. It's a good idea if we, like, when we get a two-family going to a three-family, residential, harmless, and we have to give all those variances, which we do anyway. So it's not like they don't get them, they still have to come for the change of use. So it isn't like it's gonna eliminate them having to come before us because they're gonna have to still ask for a change of use two to three. We won't vote on all those perfunctory, or however you wanna use it, variances by this ordinance. However, the piece of the ordinance that upsets and causes concern, at first with me and then agreed with others, is it talks about, it's wording more than anything, it says, "any other use that could be approved by special permit in that district." Well, that is so unpredictable.
Overly broad.
Unpredictable. So I think we, our opinion back, and if you all feel that way, I will, I will send them a letter to that saying, you know, we don't think, some of it is, some of it could be helpful, but it's been left so broad. Originally, it was drafted much longer, and then they shortened it up for some reason, and when they shortened it up, they put that and any other sentence in there, which I think ruined it. So if you all agree, that will be our response.
It was pretty, it was pretty convoluted, you know, I had trouble following it. And even harder, it was even worse after I listened to the planning board meeting. But the, so I was trying to think of how many cases in, I guess I've been at about a year's worth of meetings. How many are, you know, just rubber stamping some pre-existing footprint?
We regularly give those.
I know we regularly give them, but those are the only ones that are gonna be right, you know, go directly to go, you know. So the only one I could think of without doing work was the, the one of the veterans, the former veterans' home, Amvets, not a veterans' home, Amvets, where there, there was nothing other than just, we weren't doing proof, changing use, it was just a stamp before it went to the planning board. But I can't think of, everything else involves an approving and changing use.
Exactly, so I think-
I think it's well-meaning, but in actual fact, it's not gonna save people money.
It's not gonna help anything, and it's also gonna open up. And I know based on kind of where the drafting came from, there's people with, with agendas to streamline things that maybe we don't want to have. Kind of like Sergeant, but different than Sergeant Street, but that kind of a thing where if it can get, if it can get put by without coming to us, it could be something completely that might have been allowed in that zone with a special permit, but we still would have never approved it. Now it would be able to go forward without us. So that was my only concern, and I think if you all sound like you agree-
Good to have a speed bump.
Draft a recommendation-
Sometimes.
To that effect. And that's all they wanted from us. Okay, so with that in mind, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn, motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.